Your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember John Deворcan.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brisington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have before you the minutes of May twenty-third. We have a couple of modifications we want to make in the minutes. Councilmember Doyle. Dow.
Doyle.
She didn't even sit here.
Now, I know she's over there. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm submitting these, after submitting them to council for review this morning. There's a paragraph on page five, paragraph five, and it's missing a part of what was said, so the paragraph doesn't even make sense the way it's in the minutes. I'm recommending it be revised to include the statements as made. So it would read, "Councilmember Gibson asked how the amendment will affect maintenance or anything else related to those project areas. Councilmember Dow responded, 'The amendment is offered for the tower project itself and expressed concern if anything happens to increase the public funding need beyond the proposed amount of 5.5 million.' Councilmember Dow stated specific concerns to include overall price tag of tower increases beyond 11 million, private fundraising objective of 5.5 million is not met, proposed surplus from Unity Park Phase One of 1 million is not available. Councilmember Dow said that the objective of the amendment is that council be asked for approval if any of these situations to occur." So if I can submit those to the city clerk.
There are no objections, that'll stand that change we made. And I have a change too, since you so inspired me to look carefully at the minutes. The, let's see, I guess the first paragraph, it says Mayor White advised that the property value along Mayberry Street has increased, I want to change it to over the past ten years, from 1 million dollars to, and it says to 17 million, but that's not correct, it's increased to 21.2 million according to our financial analyst. So 17 million to 21.2. And that, then I said, and that the money will be used to reinvest in West Greenville, I want to make that, I want to change that to, and that the money may be used to reinvest in West Greenville. That, of course, is a policy call, a policy decision for the council. If there are no objections, that change. Alrighty, all in favor of the minutes, the aye?
Aye.
It's amended, second. And it's our approved. We have, we're going to switch things around a little bit. We have a lot of special guests here today. This is guest day at city council. We had an early presentation at the workshop. We're going to do it again here tonight. I want to turn this over to Assistant City Manager Shannon Lren, who has a special presentation to be made today.
In the shadow of a large development at the Explorer Academy in North Law is a small brick building with a powerful history. Dr. E. E. McLaren moved to Greenville to work as a physician at the Neblin Hospital.
When they closed down the hospital, Dr. McLaren decided that we deserved better. And so he took his own $15,000 and built the McLaren Medical Shelter on Wall Street beside his home.
Dr. McLaren was Greenville City Councilwoman Lillian Brock Fleming's pediatrician.
The clinic was not very far from where I live, which is near, near the end of the park. He was, I so loved his lobby and I went there for, for everything and he always, you know, encouraged me. I think they start off by asking me, well, how you doing this? Still, you always ask me questions about yourself. You need anything? You want to ask me any questions? Here we have a doctor because of his passion that only paid to move the hospital. But he provided services for over 1,072 patients in the five years that he worked out of there. And so this legacy of the McLaren Medical Shelter is not just a history of Black community, but it's a history of Greenville.
Mayor and city council, good evening. It is my pleasure to stand before you tonight concerning the resolution in support of the ground lease transfer for the McLaren Medical Clinic from Lighthouse Greenville to the Urban League of the Upstate. First, we have two very special guests joining us this evening for this presentation. Dr. E. E. McLaren's grandsons made the trip from New York and Maryland today for this meeting. Dr. William Jones and Mr. Edward Jones are both present tonight and what it is, gift it is to welcome you to the city of Greenville. In 2019, the City of Greenville Design Review Board approved the site plan for the McLaren Mixed Juice Building, which was conditioned on the successful movement and preservation of the McLaren Medical Clinic. In 2017, the property was identified in the City of Greenville Historic Resources Survey as individually eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. The preservation of Dr. McLaren's Medical Clinic required months of work and intentional collaboration amongst many groups. The Neighborhood and Historic Preservation Advocates and the West End Neighborhood Association both worked tirelessly with city staff to make certain the McLaren Medical Clinic was preserved. We owe them our deepest appreciation for ensuring the building was maintained. Through this process, the city was fortunate enough to acquire a remnant property along Academy Street from SCDOT, and we thank them for their partnership. City Council Resolution 2019-22, acceptance of the conveyance of the parcel from SCDOT authorized the city to accept the parcel, which city council supported by unanimous vote. If you recall, although we acquired this property, it was predicated for use only as a park. Also, in 2019, city council approved an ordinance authorizing the ground lease for the McLaren property for lighthouse living to move the building towards Academy Street approximately 70 feet, which it currently stands today. In late 2020, our city staff team was able to work with SCDOT to remove the reverter clause for the public park to allow the use of the property for a public purpose. The removal of the reverter clause opened up the possibilities for the property, encouraging the use of the building for a community need. And now today, June thirteenth, 2022, the city of Greenville can support the next steps for the long-term preservation and stabilization of the McLaren Medical Clinic building. The request before you this evening is to support the transfer of the ground lease for the McLaren Medical Center from Lighthouse Greenville to the Urban League of the Upstate. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Gail Wilson-Awan, CEO of the Urban League of the Upstate, to the podium to provide remarks and comments. Upon conclusion of her remarks, staff would ask for you to vote on the resolution before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, bring those, bring the kids. Where's his brother? See, there he is, okay. You guys come on up.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good to have you with us.
On behalf of the Urban League of the Upstate, I'm going to ask everyone that's here, on behalf of this project, our board, community members, everyone that's been involved in this, if they could just stand, really want to acknowledge everybody that's been. I'm so excited to be here because I just want to say, you know, we're talking about the history of a building and the future of a building, right? But buildings are constructed by and for people, right? It's so much more than bricks and mortar. And as we go into June 13th, Freedom Day, I just cannot think of a better time and a better way to thank you for this opportunity to steward the history of this building and the future. Thank you.
Turn that around for us to see too. I would, yeah, for council to see beautiful restoration of the building. Yeah, there we go. We appreciate it and.
And these are Dr. McLaren's great-grandchildren.
Yeah.
Two young.
Right. You guys get down to Unity Park today? Get down there, oh, okay. Okay, a lot going on in that area in celebration of the neighborhood and its history. So, I'll get a chance to get down there. Yvonne, make sure they get down there. We appreciate it. Okay, thank you very much. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, do you want to vote?
All right, so move that we accept this resolution.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. That's a resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you.
I would like to, first of all, thank the Greenville, the Upstate, excuse me, I forgot y'all cover a lot of areas, the Upstate Urban League. When Dr. One came in, she came in rolling. And when she saw this, she thought it was a wonderful opportunity for the Urban League to give back to the community. And so we appreciate Dr. McLaren's grandsons and great-grandchildren coming because they, they recognize the greatness. I also want to recognize School Board trustee Glenda Morrison-Fair. She was actually one of the babies that was born in this clinic. Stand up, Glenda. Well, that's, but it was a long time ago. My only request is that when you have the building, you put in lollipops. He, he gave you lollipops. I love the green ones. That's all I want, is keep your hands off the green ones. And I, I do want to thank the developer. Having spoken to him and told him about Dr. McLaren, how wonderful he was on the phone, and I had never met him until today. He is just a wonderful person. More people, if they invested in, in people in the community, we would have a much better place. And for him to not only invest and have it restored and moved as well, that's a wonderful thing, and we're, we're very proud of that because it gave a lot of value to all of the great things that he did for this community.
Just real quick, mayor.
And I echo all of that, but, but I also want, there was a group of citizens who were instrumental in identifying this property and really sort of as a citizenry, leading the, really, the, the saving of this building. And I know Pam was part of it. I know Ms. Reader was part of it. If you were part of that group, please stand up.
And so you guys know, I mean, this, this is a historic building that was very close to being destroyed, but through the, the initiative and the recognition of, of this group, they identified the building, went to council, went and did everything they could to try to make sure this building was safe. And because of their efforts, we are going to have this great thing, thing happen in the city. So, so like I say, I think they deserve special, special recognition on this. And also, as Councilmember Fleming said.
And Scott, please stand up, Scott. Yeah. Listen, we, we drug him through the mud. But let me just say this because, you know, we, we, we didn't want it to just be restored.
Yes.
We wanted to be something that the community could be proud of. And Scott is a, is a first-class guy, and he understood, and he would move, move things and windows. And, and we were like, guess what? Pam, I tell you, she, she was in the military, and she showed enough use of her work.
And that's what I was going to come back to, thank the developer, because a lot of developers would not have gone the extra mile that he went to in order to save this building. So because of the efforts of those two groups, we have this great thing that has happened today. And I also want to thank Shannon for a great job on this as well.
And I'm grateful so many people from the Southern Side and West Greenville neighborhood got to be here tonight to see this presentation, yet, yet another great thing happening in their neighborhood, which has taken a lot of hard knocks over the many decades, if you will, in the history of the area. And now the corner's been turned and a lot of great things are happening. And, and it's, this is also tonight, a chance to see again that's the testimony of some people who stand up and, and make these things happen, and the hard, hard work that goes into making everything good like this happen in these neighborhoods. And we appreciate all those efforts, and that's why we're so passionate about, you know, defending what you do and, and making sure that people recognize it for what it is. And again, I mentioned joy a minute ago with Unity Park. This is a joyous occasion as well. It's great to have the family here, my goodness, to, to see what this is like here in Greenville, South Carolina now. But thank you.
Shannon, when is the transfer in effect? When does it happen?
The resolution will be approved tonight, and then the transfer will occur privately between Mr. Mann and the Urban League of the Upstate, but I'm assuming it will happen fairly imminent.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Judge Holly, can you come? We have another presentation. We have yet another momentous event here tonight, which we.
Mayor, we do. I'd like to start by asking the uniformed firemen, if you would, and women, to come up on both sides here, if they're in the front. So y'all come up, and then we'll kick this presentation off here in a sec.
Shannon, is there a reception for the families? Is that what, do you want to just let them go on to the reception? Don't want to hold them?
Yes, there's a reception down on third floor for anyone who would like to, to attend.
Okay. Okay, well, it's my, it's my pleasure this evening to recognize one of our own, our interim Fire Chief Brian Horton. I want to tell you a little bit about Brian, to be able to promote him this evening in front of his family and, and his great team. Chief Horton began his fire service career in 1993 as a volunteer firefighter with the Sumter Fire Department. He became a career firefighter with Sumter in 1995 after working with the South Carolina Forestry Commission. For 20 years, he rose through the ranks in Sumter before leaving in 2013 as the captain of training, where he was responsible for training both volunteers and career firefighters. In 2013, he started his career with the Greenville City Fire Department as the chief of training. During his time as chief of training, he was responsible for transitioning the department's training program from one that delivered internal programs to one that utilized both the state of South Carolina and National Fire Academy certification programs. In 2017, he was promoted to deputy fire chief. During this time, he has been responsible for the construction of the Verde Fire Station, the renovations of the fire department's fleet maintenance facility on Lawrence Road, the construction of Augusta Road Fire Station, and additions at the department's training facilities. He was actively involved in the department receiving both an ISO Class One and national accreditation. In his role as deputy fire chief, he was responsible for the planning, directing, managing, and oversight of the dated activities and operations of the department. Chief Horton is actively involved with the South Carolina Fire Academy, where he is an adjunct instructor and serves on the advisory board. He has a bachelor of arts in criminal justice from St. Leo's University and a master's degree in public administration from Troy University. Chief Horton is joined by his wife, Laura Lee, and his two children, Mason and CJ, and Judge Holly at the podium, who will administer the oath of office.
And the oath is as follows, and it will be after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I am duly qualified.
I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
Exercise duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
To preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
The Constitution of this state and the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations, chief.
Y'all really did good.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, chief. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sure. It's traditional to give about an hour-long speech, but it was.
Be quick, I'll be quick. You have a real big, busy agenda tonight. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank those individuals who contributed to my career and the reason I'm here today. To our city manager, Mr. John McDonough, thank you for this opportunity and for your faith in me. I'd like to thank my family for without the support. It wouldn't be possible I'm here today. To the entire city leadership team, thank you for always going the extra mile to serve our city and our citizens. To city council, I'd like to thank you for your support of me and our department. And finally, to the men and women of the Greenville City Fire Department, thank you for accepting me into your family and understand I'm here to serve you. Again, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Chief Kowalski back there, I believe. Chief. Mayor, while we're on a high note, I do want to recognize another, another really important member of our team in celebrating the retirement of our PRD director, Angie Prosser. Angie spent the past three decades developing and shaping the city of Greenville's parks, recreation, and tourism landscape, and was paramount to the creation of most of Greenville's signature events. She began her career as an intern with the city's Parks and Recreation Department, and in 1995, she became the programs and events supervisor for Parks and Recreation, where she was responsible for planning and executing public events in the city, including road races, bicycle races, parades, and other citywide recreational events. She'd been a department head since 2008 and is the recipient of numerous local and nationwide awards, including the South Carolina Festival and Events Association Award. She was also awarded Professional of the Year by the South Carolina Parks and Recreation Association, the YWCA Woman of Vision Award, and most recently, the Parks, South Carolina Parks Recreation Robert L. Reed Hall of Fame Award. Her most recent accomplishment was the opening of Greenville's largest park, Unity Park. The park is already seeing record numbers of visitors and is a huge asset to our community. But she'll be the first to tell you that her list of successes and achievements are the results of hard work of many members on her team, and she's leaving her department in great shape, and we want to thank her for all that she's done for the city of Greenville for 30-plus years. Thank you. Absolutely. We thank you. I've been mayor for 25 something years, and Angie Prosser has been there for the whole ride. If any single staff person city of Greenville has ever had a bigger footprint on the city and their fingerprints on everything and made a difference, it's Angie Prosser. Her legacy is that's long. And all due respect to many, many other people, I don't know of anyone who I could say that with more certitude in terms of the biggest imprint. And perhaps the biggest accomplishment she's ever had is she's always mentored so well. She's always had a department of people who can follow in her footsteps. And she used to tell me during some of those events, if she got hit by a bus, she knew that things were going to go just fine. And that's a great, that's a great tribute to her leadership and mentorship. And Angie, thank you for your years of service to the city. Now you can come back and be a consultant. That's the way to do it. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Manager, I guess that's all. We go kind of back to our regular agenda here. We have a few folks assigned to speak. Three minutes, three-minute rule here. Pam Adams, is she here still?
She stepped out.
Left. Susan McClarity. You can speak there. You've got those fancy microphones in front of you too, if you want. No, we'll move those out of your way.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. And just to briefly speak with you tonight, I'm bringing our newest release, 2021 Report on Homelessness in Greenville County. And for those members of the public, you can find this under our website in the research tab. And inserted in the front is a very brief front and back summary, but we hope you'll jump into the full report. And if you do join it through our website, there's links to dive further into the data. Just quickly want to mention, you know, we have these three big buckets. I know we have Lorraine Crowe with us tonight, and UHC and the Continue of Care are very important partners in helping us collect much of this data, and then also Greenville County Schools. So I've put some tabs in here for you. And before we go to the first one, I just want to share, we've already brought this to county council, we're taking it to the school board tomorrow, and we're bringing it to all six municipalities. So you are the second, and we were in Fountain Inn last week. If you'll flip to that first tab, you'll just see the rising number of our children in Greenville County schools experiencing homelessness. And to remind you that Blythe Academy, since the first year the district released this information, has been the highest and continues to remain so. If you flip to the very back, we have the full list. Many of these schools are within the city limits. Just to mention a few, AJ Wittenberg, Augusta Circle, Beck Academy, East North Street, Greenville High, Greenville Middle, Hughes Academy, JL Mann, League Academy, Sarah Collins, Stone Academy, and Summit Drive are just a few. So moving from that tab to your next one, we hope you'll take some time just to think about what's making it harder as you have been investing in affordable housing to exit homelessness. And so this page, literally as we released the report, it came out that our new family median income had jumped again. So you'll see the growth since Homeless Alliance was conceived in 2015 at 58,000 to this year now jumping to 85,200. We hope that you'll also be encouraged that we've included many examples of progress we're making. So if you'll jump to the next tab on support transit, we are so appreciative of the work that you and the county are undertaking jointly in that and how we have seen the extension of the service to 11:30 PM Monday through Saturday. So we're here to support more work on that. And then finally, if you'll jump to this last tab of Community Solutions, again, for council, we thank you for your work and your investment in so many areas that are making a difference in homelessness. For the members of the public, we hope you'll jump in. I do want to mention, I saw Chief Thompson here to my right, that we've highlighted the outreach teamwork that has formed over the last year, as well as the significant investment in housing that is reaching low enough in affordability to help people exit homelessness.
Wish everybody gave us tabs. That's great. Thank you so much for that. We appreciate our new partnership with the Homeless Alliance and a great relationship, almost on a weekly basis, daily basis with Lorraine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And mayor, can I make a, make a comment? The, Susan, I think we're different here. And you, along with Lorraine, and I see a few others that have been involved in, in dealing with those that are unhoused, I think we're different in that because of y'all, we're treating people who are without housing with compassion and with grace, and not many cities can do, can do that effectively. So thank you for remembering that those that are currently living without a home are just like you and me and, and, and for treating them with compassion. That, that speaks volumes for the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stahl.
Thank you, Councilmember Stahl. Thank you both for the opportunity to bring this tonight.
Thank you. Pam Adams? I think you know our three-minute, three-minute clock up there. Appreciate you being here again.
Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me to speak. I'm Pamela Adams. I reside on, in District 25 on Augusta Road. As a neighborhood and historic preservation advocate, you saw and witnessed what we were able to do with the McLaren Medical Shelter. Again, it was a, it was a endeavor that was beyond us and involved in many people, and certainly to preserve those stories and to make sure that those stories are continuously being archived and those things repeated. So we continue to work towards other efforts the same way. And so right now, one of our biggest efforts is making sure those stories in Mayberry and Meadowbrook Park are also told, told correctly, that they're handled well, that they're archived and displayed for community learning and education well, so that the history of Greenville is told from all perspectives, so that nothing is lost, no one is without understanding the nature and the people who were once here, who once grazed these streets and neighborhoods. There were many things that some concerned citizens came to our group to address, and some of those flaws include the rightful telling of those stories and the miscollaboration of bringing community people who have vested interests and have a stake in that space. And just to be able to sit at the table and to hear what they would like to see and how their story is to be handled. Also, to understand the full story of Unity Park to be displayed and to be described in detail. For those who've never heard of Greenville, never heard of Unity Park, what we did, we did a little bit of research, and we went online to see why was it called Unity Park? We couldn't find that story. What happened during those processes, those details, and we would not, we could not find those, those areas. So to rectify these issues, our community, and especially those who identify as African-Americans, have watched with excitement the transformation of a blight and brownfield area resurrect into something more real than any of us anticipated. As planning and renovation progress, we began to hear more stories rise from the voices of those that once played a, played at Mayberry Park. Now we all have become the blessed audience to hear those stories told by the people that lived them as they articulate the vivid memories of yesteryear. Lastly, our concern is that the story behind the city's motivation to create Unity Park is not succinctly and explicitly stated anywhere in public knowledge. We, as neighborhood advocates, we have joined together with professionals, artists, creatives, story curators, organizations, and community leaders to offer our decades of mastery services, our comprehensive ideas, and innovative approaches to ensure the primary impetus in authentically and respectfully curating the story of these two parks. We seek not only, thank you. We'll talk more. Appreciate it.
We will, we will. And I appreciate your, the great job done on McLaren is just a great example of good collaboration and good listening, and we're going to certainly continue to do that. Council, we had before you had a couple of public hearings. Let's see who's handling this. Paul is here for that?
The first public hearing is to proposed abandonment of a portion of Kitson Street, AB 2, 2022.
Good evening. Front of us is a proposed abandonment of a portion of Kitston Street that joins Pendleton Street at the moment, so it's just a portion. There is a section that will remain to the south. For various reasons, there are residential units that are in the county that can still serve the public right-of-way, and that there will still be access on Seco and Calder on the other sides to serve the proposed abandonment. Any questions?
Questions?
Are there, how many houses are there on Kitson Street that went there and I just?
That portion of Kitson, I think, has two. I think it has two right now.
And two.
And they're looking at it, it's a 28-unit townhome proposed project.
When we abandon this, will any of the property go to any of the adjourned people?
The upper portion of the abandonment in red will go to the property owners for the development. That portion of Kitston that's down to the south will remain as it is.
Okay.
Any comments otherwise? Okay, 9B.
9B is a public hearing for the proposed abandonment of a portion of Tyler Street, AB 3, 2022.
This is a small strip of Tyler Street, unimproved. That was a petition from the homeowner to become part of their parcel. Currently, it's a 40-foot-wide street. We are retaining a 20-foot-wide public right-of-way as well alongside this abandonment portion.
Once that's there, do you have any idea how, how big that lot becomes? Number one. So it's going to number one?
Right, it's going to number one. I can get you those numbers. I don't know right offhand. So it'll be a 20-foot by?
I guess my question is, in this abandonment, does that trip the size to be subdivisible? Does that make sense? In other words, you see what I'm getting at?
Yeah.
Does it enlarge it to the point to where it could?
I haven't looked at that, but I don't think that's the case. No, I can get you a definitive answer on that, but I don't think that's the case.
And you know, it makes you wonder, how do they build a house?
Yeah.
On property that they do not own?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's.
It's like a carport awning? Yeah. So yeah, there's a carport awning out there right now.
I assume the property owner's asking for the abandonment?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, any other comments from the public on that? If not, that concludes our public hearing on these two matters. Thank you. And I messed up. I forgot, we had one more person who signed up to speak for three minutes, and I, my apologies. Ms. Lawless, is she here? Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. We had so much going on tonight, I just didn't like that. But thank you for your, just be mindful of our three-minute rule, but thank you.
Absolutely. I'm here to speak about the Unity Park Tower, you know, Honor Tower, and I'd like to speak in favor of that. My name is Elliot Lawless. I am a brand strategist at a local agency here in Greenville, and that word probably doesn't, that title probably doesn't mean a lot to a lot of people, but basically I help tell stories of brands and get a full encompassing feeling to be able to sell products better. And so when thinking about the Unity Tower or the Honor Tower at Unity Park, I wanted to speak in favor of that as that helps tell the story of Greenville in a very beautiful and, a very beautiful and kind way, as I think are the way that we are leaning into it as a community. We've spoken a lot about just how we want to come together as a community as a whole. The prayer started out tonight of asking the Lord to join us together, to make us ones that are of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and to love people well. And I think this is a really beautiful piece of that, to be on the other side of the park where eventually affordable housing will be included. And so it gives access not only to both sides, but to people of every income, every, every different walk of life. It also gives a 360 view of the city, which I think is very beautiful, which shows the mountains and the city and all things that are good here. And so one of the things that that tells me is, you know, it tells the 360 story of how Greenville is and how we are striving to be. It is in line with our trajectory to grow as a community. It is in the trajectory of where we want to be and the people that we want to invite here and to stay here and to learn more about who they are, to include the storytelling, to know the different walks of life, to understand more fully different perspectives that we may have never had the chance to get. So yes, that's something.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Everybody stay in the three minutes. Move to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion from council on the consent agenda?
We've got an appointment. We've got an appointment ahead of that.
We do have an appointment there.
Oh, I'm just.
Design Review Board or?
Design Review Board. I don't have a note on who's making that presentation.
I am picking that up.
Are you making? Okay.
I know that much.
Okay, I didn't have that note. All right, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recommend for appointment to the Design Review Board, Urban, for a two-year term. The appointment of Jeff Tiddy to a term that will end on April 30th, 2024.
Okay, Mr. Tiddy's been nominated. Any others? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I suppose ayes have it. Thank you. We appreciate his service. And now the consent agenda. So moved. Motion and a second. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorcan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye.
Regular agenda, 14A.
An ordinance to appropriate funding in the capital projects, hospitality tax, and local accommodations tax funds, and to authorize the use of previously appropriated funds in the Unity Park project for the design and construction of the Unity Park Honor Tower and Plaza.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? Clerk will call the?
Whoa. A little bit more discussion just for clarification, if I could ask Matt to come to the podium.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So Matt?
Yes, ma'am.
We had, you were at the podium for a long time at first reading, and just some follow-up, because you and I have met for my own clarification, along with the city attorney and the city manager, and you and I have discussed this, too. So if you could walk us through, if this passes tonight, the path forward in the funding structure for, for the public monies and the timing as such, as would be your, your recommendation?
Yes, ma'am. So upon, if council executes this ordinance this evening, we'll immediately transfer $1 million from the Unity Park construction account to a separate project for the tower. That's the Phase One savings that's referred to in the ordinance. So that corrals that money, and so it'll be immediately available. The funding from the hospitality and accommodations tax funds will be transferred to that project, and so the full 5.5 million of the public share will be available. As written in the ordinance and one of the whereas clauses, we will move forward with execution of a final design contract, and that work will commence as soon as we're able to get the designer under contract. The, the other mention in the whereas clause is about the private funding, and so the ordinance states that the construction of the tower will not be authorized until the private funding is committed.
And a commitment would come in form of signature on a sheet or something, something to that, as they've been done thus far?
Yes, similar to the rest of the project.
Okay, so there was a fair amount of discussion of this at first reading, and I, I looked back, and I offered an amendment, and there was discussion to that, to have some form of guardrails. In other words, if more public money is needed beyond the 5.5 million that we're talking about as part of this ordinance, then what would be the mechanism for allocating that public money? Because the way I read our policy now is that that does not, is not a, a, a policy requirement that it comes back to council by an ordinance. To me, and I'm, I'm new here, as are two others, the closest thing I can compare this to are the Swamp Rabbit Trail Bridges, a standalone capital investment by council. And the Swamp Rabbit Trail Bridges were an item where councils before us had set aside three and a half million, give or take. And then when the bids came in on them, it was significantly more. So that amount had been appropriated by ordinance, and it came back to council, this council here, by ordinance for the additional public funding. Nope, it was by ordinance, two readings. And the reason that's important is it allows for public comment and, and disagreement on it. So in an effort of transparency, it is my understanding that staff, i.e. you, if it becomes needed, and the three triggers I mentioned that I had to reiterate as part of the minutes were three things that could trigger that, the need for more public money. The first, the million dollars is not left over from Unity Park Phase One. However, that is going to be taken care of tomorrow, because Matt is going to move that money out of Phase One, out of the Unity Park budget, and into a standalone account of the tower. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So that money will not be available for any other needs on Phase One.
Yes, ma'am.
It's dedicated to the tower. So that is safe for the tower. The two others that I could see as risks, for lack of a better term, are a deficiency in private fundraising of the goal, which is 5.5 total, or the cost of the tower grows, and I've been, we were all assured last meeting that the city manager will give us monthly reports on both of those items, both fundraising and design and, and construction cost estimates as they change or don't change. So I feel like we're going to be informed a lot better than we have on this in the past, but nonetheless, if either of those two things happen, more public money would be needed if the tower is to proceed. And I'm, I'm hearing you say, or I heard you say, and feel free to tell me again, what would be staff's methodology for, for getting more public money should it be needed?
Yes, ma'am. So to answer your original question, the, the technical answer is there is not a requirement that staff would come back and get council approval to add funding. The practical answer under the leadership of the city manager, that staff recognizes the public importance of this project, and if there is a change, as you mentioned, like in this Swamp Rabbit Trail Bridges, we would come back to city council and ask for an increased appropriation rather than legally moving funds as we have the ability to do in other projects.
And that would come before us as an ordinance with a first and second reading, as, as was the Swamp Rabbit Trail Bridges. So there's nothing different about that than this, and I do want to make some comments before the vote for the record, because I do think that all capital items, to Councilmember Gibson's point, all capital items, if an increase is needed in the funding of any CIP item, that should come back to council as an ordinance for a vote. They're individual items. It, it, it was policy at some time, it's not anymore, and I do, I think it's valuable policy. You know, we, we approve bridges based on a number, we approve tower based on a number, and if that number grows, we should have a vote by ordinance as to whether or not to fund that. So I'll, I'll make some comments when we're ready, and I can give those now or later if there are other questions.
Mr. Mayor, I just say, I appreciate the fact that if presumably in the absence of policy, a lot of people wouldn't know that, because the staff under his leadership has, has, as a matter of practice, acted as if there was a policy. We haven't heard one example of a bridge, but I think about so many times where, in my view, that's come before council, as I would expect to be the case with or without policy in the future.
I would say, too, that's all, as far as I'm concerned, that's always been the policy, whether, however it's stated, and certainly the bridges is a really good example of that. If we come back to council.
It's always been a procedure, and if it's not a policy, then it is our job to make it a policy.
So can I give some remarks to that point? And that's all I'll say on the tower, ready to vote.
Yep, get a minute or two.
And I'm submitting these for the record. Camille, I'll give you an electronic version. I'll start once again by thanking our city staff that's continued to work tirelessly on punchless items and providing the maintenance required to keep up Unity Park in its current state. The park has attracted many children and families that are enjoying the facilities thanks to your efforts and the generosity of our donors. We are all grateful for your dedication to the city of Greenville and the opening of Unity Park. The proposed Unity Park Tower has now reached second reading for approval of 5.5 million in additional public funding. I continue to oppose this public funding, referring back to the comments I submitted at first reading. I reiterate my concern that was originally proposed for this element of the park, that what was originally proposed for this element of the park and supported in concept by previous councils was roughly half the cost it is estimated to be at this time, and was intended to be funded fully through private donations without the use of public money. At first reading, I offered an amendment to ensure that no additional public monies could be committed to this project without council's formal approval by an additional ordinance. To Councilmember Gibson's point at first reading, I believe that should be the policy, not just for the tower, but for all capital items, just as we did when additional funding was necessary to support the Lawrence Road Swamp Rabbit Trail Bridges. Requiring approval for additional monies through an ordinance ensures transparency and allows for sufficient public comment. We have had some discussion on this tonight, and though I have not offered the amendment again at this reading, it's my full expectation that should more than, that should more than the proposed five and a half million in public funds be required, an ordinance for such an expenditure would be presented to council for deliberation. The city manager assured us at first reading that we will receive monthly updates on the tower design, cost, and private fundraising. receive monthly updates on the tower design, cost, and private fundraising efforts going forward. At this time, I also ask that staff review our capital project policies and look towards developing a policy that requires council approval by ordinance for any spending on capital items beyond what is allowed when presented in the budget. Lastly, I'm reiterating my concern that our ability to support tourism efforts, efforts remains tenuous due to supply chain and workforce issues. At first reading, I asserted that we are in the most challenging time I can ever remember in workforce recruitment. Our restaurateurs and hoteliers, who are the biggest contributors to the H-tax and A-tax revenue stream, are struggling to find the workers to support tourism efforts. Let me at this time add my concern about our own challenge as a city in workforce recruitment. Our Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department has primary responsibility for our maintenance and upkeep of not only Unity Park, but all of our parks, recreation facilities, and many public spaces. With this budget, we are funding some additional staff positions for this increased workload, but as even our own week in review highlighted last Friday, we, like most entities, are competing to find the workforce to fill these positions. With this vote, we as a council are adding significantly to the workload and our current staff's bandwidth to absorb, to absorb, and that is being challenged by, and is being challenged, in my opinion. I supported Councilmember Stahl's amendment at first reading to pause this tower project, not only to allow us time to find alternatives for a fully privately funded park element, more in keeping with the design aesthetic of the park, but also to allow us bandwidth to absorb the inevitable increased workload created when opening the second-largest park in our city of some 60 acres in size. We have got to recognize that managed growth, something that I ran on as a candidate in 2019, includes absorbing and deliberately responding to the growth that we are so fortunate to attract. Without this, we risk compromising quality of life for those who already live here, work here, and we certainly challenge our ability to take care of the things that we already have.
Council, uh, ready for vote? Uh, have, you may comment.
Comment. Uh, and short statement, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Shannon and Lighthouse and all those, they were involved in the McLaren, for bringing some joy to us today. Uh, that, that was, um, very special. And the opening of Unity Park was also a historic moment for Greenville, and clearly demonstrated Greenville's unity and the joy our citizens have for our public spaces. Opening day was a day we will always remember, uh, and I apologize if I leave names off, but Valda, Angie, Reverend Mills, Miss Duckett. That was a very special day, and, uh, I was touched. Uh, however, I'm sad that the discussions over the Honor Tower have been anything but unified. I fully appreciate the promise made to the community in building the tower as a symbol of unity. However, the scope and cost of the tower changed in the last couple of months. The tower this council approved was an 80-foot tower costing $5 million, funded by private donations. Over the last few months, the tower grew to 120 feet, costing $11 million, of which $5 million would be publicly funded. As expected, I'm voting against the $11 million funding for the tower again. Uh, this is not a vote against the tower, uh, absolutely not a vote against the tower, but a vote for us to, in the future, to be more deliberate and transparent in the use of public funds. I believe we could still have provided a worthy tribute toward the promise, yet at a more reasonable price.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just, I, I appreciate, thank you both, by the way. Um, I always, I'm a, I'm a true believer that dissension, uh, and disagreement provides a great opportunity to make sure that you get projects and decisions as, as good, as, as good as you can. Um, I think there's some clarification that I'd like to mention. We do talk about public funds, and I, and they are public funds, uh, but I would like to clarify that an overwhelming majority of the $4.5 million of public funds are actually coming from our accommodations taxes. Accommodations taxes are hotel taxes. Hotel taxes are generated from people who don't live here. Um, and let me just, just clarify, yes, they are public funds, but accommodations taxes are restricted funds. Looking at, looking at South Carolina statute, Title VI, Chapter 1 dash 530, these accommodations taxes are strictly, um, restricted to things that generate, uh, tourism. So aquarium, it can be used for aquariums, it can be used for conference centers, it can be used for, uh, cultural centers, but, but it's strictly prohibited to only those items that generate tourism, as defined in state law, and also tourism, meaning it's an attraction or causes people who do not live here to come here. So when I look at the tower, and I look at the $5.5 million that will be raised from private donations, and I look at the $4.5 million overwhelming majority coming from accommodation taxes, I look at the tower as, from a financial standpoint, uh, something that's going to be paid partially by private, private donors and partially by people who don't live here. And I believe that the tower and Unity Park, in a hundred years, in a hundred years, Greenvilleians will look at the Unity Park, and they will look at the tower as one of our greatest achievements in the history of the city of Greenville. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Fleming.
Um, I appreciate the, um, all of the discussion, and, and I wish that possibly some of this discussion had gone on earlier, because it has caused even some of the people who have said they were against the tower had misinformation, which is sad, because when you have misinformation, you say things and you do things that make other people feel bad. Currently, our community in the Southern Side and West Greenville area, we feel a little stomped on, not by council, but, but even by our Greenville newspaper. Some of the things that have been said, uh, make us feel as if it's a racist issue, and we have not used that, but when you make statements like, there's a thousand, um, sexual predators, predators within, um, a few feet of the park, nobody ever mentioned that before? But when the issue came up two weeks ago, now all of a sudden, there are negative things being said, and it's almost, uh, as, uh, my pastor said a couple of weeks ago, a slap in the face, and it is very insulting. And, uh, thank the young lady for coming in and explaining, and we've had a lot of people to contact us and call us who are in great support of the tower and what we know will happen for the community. And the children are still playing, they couldn't care less about, all of us getting all, uh, over, overheated about things, but I do want us as a community to realize unity is the last part, as Mary Duckett said, of community. And we don't want anything to be, to separate us about this issue and the other. There are so many things the city of Greenville has done since I've been here. Nobody said one word about one penny we spent. Nobody said one word about if any sexual predators were there by the zoo, by, um, by Cleveland Park, about anything. So I'm saying, let's not create problems that don't exist. As we move forward with this tower, we thinking of the word honor. There'll be so many people whose history will be preserved when this tower is built. It will not just be one where we'll just say, yeah, it's over there, but we'll be able to discuss the history of the people who gave their lives, some of them who are still working. There are many mothers, fathers, and small children who will know who their heroes are, and they'll be from Greenville, South Carolina. So I thank all of you, and we look forward to moving forward with this.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, just real quick, sorry. Um, by far, this is the most divisive thing that I've been in part of since I've been on council. Three weeks ago, we met at Unity Park, and I can tell you, from living here my entire life, I have never seen Greenvilleians as united and joyous as we were that day. I had, I noticed myself, that there was a crowd that was as diverse as any I've seen in Greenville, and, and not one where there were two sides that were arguing and fighting against each other, but a, but a, but a crowd where everyone was united. I had people who walked by that celebration and made the exact same comment to me. I've never seen that many black and white people together in Greenville without fighting with one another. And then four days later, we come here and we have a fight about this tower. Now, now, I, I'm taking everyone at their word that what their concerns are, are their concerns, but the perception of those concerns was very troubling to people in the Southern Side community and the African-American community in this town. This was a promise that city council made to those residents. Now, a lot of people don't see it that way, but when we do a plan, and we bring people in, and we say, we're going to do this, that's a promise that we make. And if all of a sudden, we start to say, okay, we're not going to adhere to that promise, we've got a problem. There are a lot of people who are on the other side of this tower who participated in the 2040 plan. What if all of a sudden, we as council said, well, you know what? Yeah, we, we passed that 2040 plan, but we're not really going to be committed to affordable housing, we're not really going to be committed to green space, we're not going to really be committed to, to transit. They would be up in arms, and that is what the people in the Southern Side and many in the African-American community saw about this tower. Now, I understand that, that the concern is fiscal responsibility, but my point is, of all the projects that we could have picked, to talk about fiscal responsibility, this was the last one that should have been picked. We spent 6.4 million dollars on two pedestrian bridges, two, not 10, not five, but two. $3.2 million a bridge, over a million dollars, or close to a million dollars more than we're going to spend on this tower, and there was not one peep from the community, not one. No one came to council and said, we should be spending that money on homeless services. No one came to council and said, we should be spending that money on affordable housing. No one came to council and said that we should be spending that money on a host of other things that we can't spend that money on. But for some reason, this project seemed like it was okay to have those concerns about. I am glad that this is the final vote that we're having on this, because hopefully, we can move on from this and become united again like we were on that day when we opened this park. And I don't think it's going to take 100 years for people to be happy and proud about that tower. It didn't take 100 years for Liberty Bridge, and there was plenty of apprehension in the community about the cost of that. I believe that as soon as this thing is built, the overwhelming majority of Greenville citizens are going to be as proud about it as they are of Liberty Bridge.
Clerk, call roll.
Councilmember DeWorcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
No.
Councilmember Dow.
No.
Mayor White.
Aye.
And thank the, uh, folks in the audience tonight who played such an integral role in making the decisions about the tower and the park all along, and if the, if the height of the park changed, if anyone wants to know how that happened, the height of the tower changed, they're, they're sitting in the audience tonight, they, they made that decision based on their participation in the process, but, um, can't add to what you said, but thank y'all for your, what you, what you've done. Uh, let's see, 14B.
An ordinance to appropriate $29,876,899 for the fiscal year FY 2020, 2022 to '23 capital budget for the fiscal year 2022, '23 to the fiscal year '26, '27 capital improvement program.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember DeWorcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 14C.
An ordinance to provide for the adoption of a city operating budget is execution in effect for the fiscal period July 1, 2022, through June 30th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Clerk call roll.
Oh, uh, can I ask you a question, just very briefly? So, community development money in the revision for this went down by, I'm seeing 26, but Home and Hopewell went up by north of 100. So what, tell us just why the revision, what, what happened?
So, the numbers in the first reading of the budget were placeholders, they were based on, on the current year's allocation, and we received our new allocation for next year, um, in the intervening weeks, and so we've updated, um, the, the budget with the new numbers. So, as Home and Hopewell increased, our CD, our CDBG funds decreased, um, and that's the net difference.
So when we get those allocations, are they spelled out as Hopewell and Home? Like, do we have discernment in that?
Yes, there's, there's three different allocations.
All right.
And they come from the federal government.
Right. Interesting, that's, that's interesting.
And we would think that we, we didn't lose population, so undoubtedly, so they cut the budget.
But they increased for Home and Hopewell.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh.
That is the 14th or 15th time in the last 14 or 15 years, they've cut the budget that we use for affordable housing. I just need y'all to know that.
It, it is usually a fun surprise for the community development staff to hear what the number's going to be.
Yeah, that's ridiculous, but anyway.
That's the only modification from the last reading.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Clerk call roll.
Councilmember DeWorcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Thank you, Matt, the whole finance team for bringing us such a great, strong budget. 15A.
An ordinance to approve an amendment to the license agreement between the city of Greenville and B Cycle LLC.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Clerk, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Thank you, Camille. 15B.
An ordinance to abandon a portion of Kitson Street, AB 2, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Clerk, um, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15C.
An ordinance to abandon a portion of Tyler Street, AB 3, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second.
So, I, I'm tending to make a, a motion to postpone until we have an answer on that division, you know, if it's making it big enough to be a subdivision. Paul, is that going to cause great angst if we postpone till the next meeting? Huh? Do I need a motion?
It's in Councilmember Brazington's district, right?
Yeah, second reading.
I, I was just proposing, there's time for second reading.
There's a second.
Okay, yeah, great point. If we could have that answer at the second reading, that'd be great. Thanks, Paul.
Clerk call roll.
Councilmember DeWorcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15D.
An ordinance to prohibit the operation of trucks on Haney Street between South Church Street and Augusta Street.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, clerk will call the roll.
We have brief, brief discussion and comment?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Uh, I'm, I'm all in favor of this, but, but I would say that if and as council considers this matter, um, I want to just reiterate and encourage us to lever all, uh, those, those resources at our disposal as a city of Greenville to make sure that it is enforced, because I do have concerns about whether, about whether or not we are exhausting all measures to enforce similar prohibitions elsewhere in the city.
Echo. Okay. Yeah. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15E.
An ordinance An ordinance to appropriate $168,500 in the accommodations tax fund to repair the fountain, splash pad, and associated infrastructure at River Place.
Should we postpone this until we have the presentation?
Motion, well, motion second.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
Your motion, please. Motion and second. Motion in the circuit, okay. Bill.
So is this the presentation we were going to get at the work session?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yes, I wanted to speak on this briefly. When the fountain went down originally, Hughes Development reached out to us and wanted to try and work some upgrades into the scope of work with the repairs. We agreed with that, they went out, they got a, an estimate, and based on that estimate, we set aside $81,500 for the repairs, hoping that some of the upgrades would be able to happen also. Over time, there was concern about whether that was enough money, both for the upgrades and for the repairs. We went out, got a new estimate, which we received last month, which was significantly higher for both, the, the upgrades and the repairs. When we received that, we wanted to go out to the same, the same entity that looked at the, both of them, the upgrades and repairs, just to get an idea on what it would cost for the repairs alone, bring it back to the way it was, and then work later with the Hughes Development Corporation about possible upgrades in the future. This appropriation, when added to the previously set aside money of $81,500, would bring that up to working condition. It would turn the water on and return it to the functionality that it had when we first got it.
Bill, would that include the horn and the whistle and the lights and the fog?
It does, it, it does include the horn and the whistle, which was part of the original scope of when we turned it over. All the fog and the lights and the changes, those were the upgrades, which we can have a conversation with Hughes moving forward.
Then this is, he gave you a not to exceed.
We do have a not to exceed.
And is this the same, and they're on retainer? They're, we have them as a contract to handle?
We, we have, we have worked with them every, every year, so.
So will they be responsible for maintenance on the Unity Park's splash pad?
They will not.
They will not? They will not be the contractor for the Unity Park?
They are not, at this point, yes.
What, what's wrong with it? What's broken?
Several of the pumps have all gone out, they, they got water and it came up to a certain level that it took all of the pumps and a lot of the nozzles and things out. Above that were the controllers, and at the time that it went down, the controllers were still working. They won't be able to test the controllers until they hook up all the pumps and see. So the appropriation would cover the controllers in case they're bad, but hopefully, they still work and we can save that money.
If you want to have fun, go down and look at where the control operations are for this. This is extremely, it's deeply buried into, it's hard to access it, so it's always been a complicated, repetitive repairs since the day it opened. Thankfully, the drill, the splash pad in Unity Park is totally different, it's completely above ground and looks like the nuclear power plant in the Coney.
And let me just say, when you have children who are under 12, they're very curious. They were asking me, how do I get into the room? I said, what? I don't know. You don't know where it is, lady? I said, no, I do not. So I'm just saying, children are always thinking, always thinking. So if we don't have the best, the high class, the rug, I'm telling you, we may even have to put a guard out there, because these little kids are trying to figure out how to get in there.
Does this cover the total cost to repair together?
It does.
Okay. And do you have confidence that this will?
I do have confidence.
The, and then, when do you expect this to be done?
Well, once the appropriation's done, the monies we would give them to proceed, they would have to order all the parts and get everything together.
Well, let me ask you it this way.
I'm hoping by the end of the summer to.
Yeah, I was going to say, do you think some, maybe sometime this fall, that get a little time in before the winter?
Correct, that's what we hope.
Thank you.
Clerk Caldwell.
Councilmember DeWorcan.
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15F.
Sorry, I was so excited about the splash pad. I was so excited not to be called.
I have a two and a four-year-old, so.
15F.
An ordinance to amend a 2021, 2022 annual action plan and the 2020 consolidated plan to include the provision of eligible activities associated with a Section 108 loan guarantee application.
So move. Second.
Motion second. Clerk Caldwell.
Councilmember DeWorcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Thank you. New Business 16A, resolution?